The first time, I can't say it's the first time, but the first time I started taking it seriously was I go into junkie mail and try and unsubscribe. And then I drag down the old bills. I basically tried to unsubscribe this and see if they pop up anymore.
Be shaking in there.
Or am I wasting my time?
I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board meeting of July 1st, 2021, to order at 6 o'clock PM and ask Clerk Czynski for roll call, please.
Mayor Gunther.
Here.
The clerk's here, Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Brady.
Here.
Trustee Guzzo is absent tonight. Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Simonovic.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Village Manager May.
Here.
Assistant Village Manager Parker.
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Again, I know Trustee Little will say this, but get out to the cruisin' nights. It's beautiful outside, but I'll let her say more about that when it's her report. Open forum. Anybody here? No one's here? This is an opportunity, if someone's here for something not on the agenda, to address the board. And we don't have any that's been sent in. Manager May?
No, and in fact, that's a good point. So effective actually today, July, not because it's a meeting night, but because it's July 1st, the online public comment forum is suspended.
So, okay. All right. So I will close open forum and move on to reports. My reports first, I'm going to ask Chief Gunther to give an update on our public safety meeting we held on June 23rd and some information about National Night Out.
Thank you, Mayor. Last Wednesday morning, we had our Police Public Safety Committee meeting and we covered a variety of topics. First and foremost, we recognized Officer Jason Gritzenbach with 20 years of service to the village. Another agenda item was the creation of a new sergeant position, which will come before the board for consideration later this evening, and I will give more details at that time. A quick staffing update, we have two officers that were released from probation today. We currently have two officers in field training. We have one officer that was just hired a couple of weeks ago. We have two more officers that will be onboarded on Monday, and we have a couple more in the background phase. So we have a lot of big time youth movement with the police department, which kind of necessitates the creation of another sergeant position, which we'll talk about later. And then we currently closed our probationary testing, so we exhausted our last eligibility list for patrol officers. We closed the deadline for applications was yesterday. I believe we received roughly 58 applications. By comparison, on the last list that we expired or exhausted in about four months, which should have lasted two years, we had about 100 names that started that process. And so I'm not too, I don't think this last list will last very long either, but that's the state of law enforcement right now, where just not a lot of people are going for the jobs. And as the mayor mentioned, our National Night Out event will be on Tuesday, August 3rd, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the police station. We'll be conducting building tours, squad car and SWAT vehicle tours. We'll have a lot of officers out and we'll have food prepared by the Lions Club while supplies last. I'm always told to say that. But the Lions Club, every year, year in and year out, does a great job providing food, cooking it, and it's always a great time. No bounce house this year for post pandemic considerations. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief. I have a couple more items that pertain to our 100th anniversary celebration on this Sunday, July 4th. Fireworks are back at Ty Warner, the best fireworks in the, at least the county, if not the state. We're enhancing those fireworks for the 100th. So it starts at 9:30, activities start at 4 o'clock. There will be food trucks and activities available for families. So, and entertainment starts at 7:00 or 7:30, they'll have a band play. So come out and enjoy it, it's supposed to be really good weather. I also want to thank Cordia, Senior Living Facility Katie Duda. She organized a luncheon last week, and she had several of our longtime Westmont residents, including Joel and Donna Hersick, Marcella and Teresa Leveque, Joyce Phelps, and Ruth Katz, who will be celebrating her 100th birthday in two weeks. I wanted to have her here for that board meeting. Unfortunately, she's limited with her transportation, so I will be going there that morning presenting her with a proclamation, and we'll show that video under my report that night. But it was great sitting down with all three of those individual, four of those individuals, and reminiscing about Westmont. They had a lot of history, especially Marcel, who started the bank at Westmont, who was very active in this community, so. She hired Trustee Addington? Uh huh. He did have Trustee Addington work for the bank, yes, yes. Marcel also gave me my first home loan after I was here for three years, and he did me a great favor, kept it on the books there, 13%. Wow, that's great, yeah, it was 15 if you went in the market, so. In the year, 80, 81, yeah. So he was very much interested in the community, so that was a great deal, right, 13%. One other item, the 100th anniversary license plates, they're on sale now to the public. The cost is $25 per license plate. Please sign up at the village website. They're available to be displayed for a two month period, which is October and November of this year. So please, if you get a chance and you want one, go on our website. That's all I have, Clerk Czynski.
Okay. On July 5th, the day after 4th, the village offices will be closed in observance of Independence Day. Garbage and recycling collection will be one day later, so just, you know the program then. Garage sales, there will be no fee for garage sale permits again this year. Please visit the website for the usual village guidelines. Community-wide garage sale will be the weekend of August 6th, 7th, and 8th. To sign up and participate, visit again the village website. So that's all I have, except have a very safe and happy 4th of July.
At Ty Warner Park.
We'll see you in Ty Warner Park.
Thank you. Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. Our next Public Works Committee meeting will be July 15th, 4:30, right here at Village Hall. I think it's our first one that we'll all hopefully be back in here for, so looking forward to that. Special thanks to our Public Works staff. For those of you that aren't familiar, we sent quite a few of our crew, I'm sure volunteered, to go help out our friends in Woodridge, and it looks like Darien, too. I know I spent a couple of days there helping out a good friend, and every time I would drive in, the day after, second day, third day after, you'd always see Westmont trucks, guys with chainsaws in their hands, I mean, really diving in like it was their town. We weren't alone, everybody was helping, but it was great to see, so we appreciate Mike's leadership in getting everybody out there. Thanks for that, Mike. Also coming up, mark your calendars, Public Works is planning an open house for September 25th. Details will be announced shortly, and I'm sure Trustee Little will mention this eventually as well, but July 22nd is a big cruisin' night for Public Works. It's the truck night, so please mark your calendars, come out. Hopefully we'll see everybody out there. And coming up is a county stormwater meeting on Tuesday, bright and early after the holidays, so I'll be there and hopefully learn about a couple of updates on the big St. Joseph's Creek plan. And I'll let the board know after that, and that's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items tonight. Westmont Special Events Cruisin' Nights are held every Thursday from 5:00 to 9:00 downtown Westmont through September the 2nd. So come out for this, it's so much fun, it's so, the weather's perfect for tonight. I can't see why anybody would, you know, stay home and not go out for this one. We do have the Taste of Westmont coming up next week. It's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. I'm ready next week, I can't believe it's here. If you want to be a sponsor or a volunteer, please go to contact WSEC or Westmont Special Events at wsec@westmondevents.com, or call the office at 630-829-9378. We're going to be having six art shows during the cruisin' nights this year, so sign up to participate. It's on the village website, there's information, so please go out for that. And then at 4:30, we had an Administration Finance Committee meeting, and what we discussed were the, we gave an award, a recognition award, to Public Works Foreman and Arborist John Yader for four and a half week, four and a half years of staff support for the Environmental Improvement Commission. And we treasured his input and his success, as we always did, and just hate to see him leave us, but he's going to be doing other things for the village, and that's great. We also talked about dementia-friendly Westmont. Mary Ferguson came in and updated us on how well we're doing, that the library's very positive toward this. We can get best practices out of Northwestern and Rush Presbyterian, and she just did a great job of updating us all on that. The Hotel Motel Grant for the Park District will be coming up in front of the board before long, but we're going to be authorizing money to go out for holidays, the haunted trails, and concerts in the park, so that's always a very good thing, and so be looking for information on those. And then last, we talked about the appropriations ordinance, which is our budget, and then a contingency on top of that, and I think our Finance Director and Assistant Village Manager Spencer Parker did a great job of providing that, so I thank you very much for that. And that's all I have, Mayor.
There's a black helicopter, chief's trying to figure out who's flying over Village Hall. Thank you.
They're on airspace.
Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. Westmont, first, we had a meeting in June, and some of the highlights were, you know, the one topic that we were tasked with this pandemic year was the census, and we're still waiting on the final totals on that. And, you know, everybody's anxious to hear what the population of the community is. Also, the Chamber of Commerce is putting together a jobs page so that they can find employees for local businesses because of job shortages. The PRC, People's Resource Center, their food donations and financial donations have been going very well. They actually have served less people because there's more people helping others because of the pandemic, you know, it's more like a generous environment. But they're in need of delivery drivers, so they're in need of volunteers this time. So if anybody has some time to volunteer at People's Resource, they're looking for delivery drivers. And it was nice to report that the library has expanded their hours and expanded their programs now that we've kind of turned the corner on this pandemic. And then lastly, it's great to see everybody in this room again and not on a computer screen. That is all.
Thank you. Trustee Guzzo is unfortunately cannot attend, but she would tell us that the fire truck night is August 5th during our cruisin' night, and that's a very popular event. And then the police squad car night is the first Tuesday in September.
It's the second.
Oh, Thursday, the second, yes. So I'll turn over here to Trustee Brady.
Thank you, Mayor. The Westmont Chamber of Commerce has been very busy. They've had three ribbon cuttings recently. Clemens Enterprise, which offers health and insurance, they're at 41 North Cass, they had a ribbon cutting ceremony in after hours on June 23rd. This business has expanded and relocated from previous location of 8 North Cass. The Deli, which is at 800 Oakmont Lane, had a grand opening and ribbon cutting on Monday, June 28th. They expanded and have a new location, they moved from their previous location of 601 Oakmont Lane. Torrisi Restaurant, that's at 14 North Cass, that's formerly Vince's Torris', they had a grand opening this morning, I attended it. Very interesting, they remodeled inside, walking in, it's almost like walking into a small Italian village, the way it's all laid out. Really did it, that gentleman did a great job. The Community Development Department is in the process of filling several vacancies, including a permit coordinator, that recently created a Deputy Director of Community Development and Planning. The next community development meeting, which I'm chairman, will be on Thursday, August 26th at 16:30 or 4:30 in the afternoon. Anyway, Westmont Police Department is conducting a National Night and Open House on Tuesday the 3rd of August from 8, or from 5 o'clock to 8:00 PM at their headquarters at 500 North Cass. That's all I have.
Well, thank you. Trustee Simonovic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Trustee Little mentioned, we had the Administration and Finance Committee earlier this evening. The next meeting for that will be August 12th at 4:30 PM. I also really enjoyed learning a little bit more about the dementia-friendly Westmont and what we're doing as a community to train and provide resources to better serve our population. If anyone wants more information on that, you can reach out to dementia-friendly westmont at westmont-il.gov. One of the things we talked about at the Administration and Finance Committee was about the positions for which the village is hiring right now. We are accepting applications for a full-time Deputy Director of Community Development Planning. We recently held interviews in the Community Development Department for permit coordinator positions, so we're moving forward with offers on those. We are accepting applications for a full-time administrative assistant in the fire department. We have interviews scheduled in the IT department for a full-time help desk technician position. Public Works has applications for a full-time mechanic that they're going to be scheduling interviews for, and we are also accepting applications for a forester intern in the Public Works Department. I'd also like to give a welcome to the five new hires that started with us in June here at the village, and also a welcome to the two new officers that will be starting with us on Monday. The last thing I have, we've had a lot of questions come up about the American Rescue Plan Act and what that money will mean for the village. What we know now is that we're waiting for these funds to come through the state of Illinois. We are hoping that we will be able to use these funds to offset some upcoming water infrastructure projects, so we will not, we'll continue to delay the village's previously planned water rate increases. So we're actively monitoring the situation with regards to the funding that we can get through the ARPA, and we will update you as soon as we know more. That's all I have.
Thank you. Before I move on, we had a couple of individuals come in. Were you here for open forum, or you're here for an item on the agenda? Because if you're here for open forum, I could, nope, everybody's here for something on the agenda, okay, I'll move on. Does any trustee see any items removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd ask Manager May to read the consent agenda.
This evening, first on the consent agenda are Village Board Minutes. Board to consider a motion approving the minutes of the village board meeting held June 17, 2021. It's followed by Finance Ordinance Number 5 in the amount of $1,450,526.37. We have several purchase orders. First purchase order, Commonwealth Edison Company, $30,000. This represents the annual amount for electricity at the Public Works facility. I'll also add, this is an encumbering purchase order, we're not distributing this money yet, and we're also, at the same time, working on having this added to the franchise agreement, the free institution part of that. Next is Sewer Equipment of Illinois, $432,541. It's the purchase of the Vector truck, assists with sewer catch basin cleaning. Next, Core and Main LP, $170,773. These are the fixed based antennas for the water meter reading. NCR Payment Solutions Corporation, $72,000. It's the annual credit card processing fees on our current utility bill system. Next is Truck Country of Illinois, $163,512. This is a replacement five ton dump truck, and this is also purchased through state bid. Next one is Curry Motors, $86,888, also a state bid, but this one is for a replacement one ton dump truck. The last purchase order, Sikich LLP, $38,407. Annual audit services, annual audit services. That brings the total of the purchase orders to $994,121. Together with Finance Ordinance Number 5, it is $2,444,647.37. And there was one other qualifying comment in the Finance Ordinance, right?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, bring notice to the fact to the board that there's been one minor change from the Finance Ordinance that you saw as of yesterday, we had one adjustment today. I sent an email about it, it doesn't change the total amount of Finance Ordinance, it's simply adjusting, one of the checks is made out to, there was a cash bond that we were refunding, and initially we were refunding a portion to the bondholder and then a portion being remitted back to the village. And today, it was determined that we no longer have to hold on to those funds on the village's side, so it's all being remitted back to the bondholder, and so you received an email with an updated Finance Ordinance, just moments.
Covered in an email, and you have that, and just be aware that that, this is the corrected Finance Ordinance in this consent agenda. That's all, Mayor.
Dollar amounts the same.
Correct.
Do you have a motion to approve as presented?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second.
Nero. Motion made in second to approve, on the question.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. I guess it's defending, so I haven't heard anything regarding Westmont and the recent rains and any flooding, but we have an item on here that's $432,000, and I know in 2013, when some of us came on, you know, were elected and became board members, there was, after 2013, there was a huge push to do the maintenance and clean the sewers and all of that. And, you know, I support the idea that we're getting a Vector and we're continuing to do the maintenance. I don't know how much of that previous flooding was caused by, you know, the lack of maintenance or the equipment or the, you know, paying attention to that, but it surely became important. Flooding was a big topic in 2013. Here we had four or five days now of an ungodly amount of rain, and we don't have the kind of problems that we did. And I know we spent a lot of money on, you know, flooding issues, and I'll say, you know, as of now, money well spent, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'd ask for roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes, move on to new business. Westmont Community School District 201 signed request. Board to consider ordinance granting the following requests from Westmont Community School District 201 for an electronic message board sign at the Westmont Middle School or Junior High located at 944 Oakwood Drive. And Director Sylvester. Oh wait, I got to keep reading, right? Zoning, I better read more here. There are also zoning ordinance special use permit to replace an existing monument sign with an electronic message board sign in the R3 Single Family Detached Residence District. And two, zoning ordinance variance to allow the electronic message board component of the sign to include moving video images and animation. And now Director Sylvester.
Mr. Mayor and trustees, this is a pretty straightforward request from the school district to replace an existing monument sign with an upgraded sign that has an electronic message board. As you all know, the village has some pretty tight regulations and restrictions on signage. We've got some restriction. Well, first of all, electronic message board signs in a residential district such as this one require a special use permit, that's the additional scrutiny that I've explained previously, goes through Planning and Zoning Commission, which this request did. That body held a public hearing and is recommending approval of the special use permit. And we also have some restrictions on, basically to prevent signs from like flashing and scrolling and blinking and being real distractions, particularly for drivers. And so this request includes a request for a variance so that the message board can change over time. So the variance is allowed the message to change over time with a limitation, not once more than every five seconds. And again, the special use is required just for an electronic message board sign in this particular zoning district.
I have a question. Will this sign be on 24 hours a day?
It's a very good question, and it reminds me that I'm going to try, when I present these cases from the Planning and Zoning Commission, to just call to your attention some of the conditions of approval that are being recommended for the request. So if you look in your packet, and I was just trying to pull it up.
Number two, I have a second question.
But to answer the question, it will, it is required to be turned off at night. That is one of the requirements.
Okay, also, if the brilliance is too, I live in that block, and there's quite elderly people that live near me, and I know they're going to make a statement. Can that be, who would we contact to tone down the brilliance?
Well, you would start with the school district, and they've said that they are going to comply with our light intensity requirements, and I'm sure they'll be cooperative, but if they're not, then you would give me a call.
Very cooperative, no, they're very cooperative people, so, thank you.
So if you haven't looked at them already, there are a couple of stipulations that we're suggesting for this approval, and these are included in the board memo, which I keep closing that tab, but the lights have to be, or the sign has to be turned off after 10:00. They have to have a photo sensor to adjust brightness, which we were just discussing. Sign has to basically comply with the plans that they've already submitted to us in terms of the location. Words, graphics, and other images, if they do change, cannot change more frequently than once every five seconds. And then the photometric standards, again, making sure that it's not too bright.
Do I have motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second.
Nero. Motion made in second to approve, questions or comments?
Mayor?
Yes, Trustee Barker.
So it would be interesting to hear, I know this gentleman here is from the school district, if they got what they wanted in the sign, if it's going to function the way the, I'm the chairman of the Environmental Improvement Committee, and light pollution is one of our big concerns, and then the fact that it's in a neighborhood up where Trustee Brady lives, but I also know some folks that live directly across the street from the school. I haven't heard any complaints, of course, but if it meets the needs of the school, it would be nice to know that our lighting ordinance does meet your need and accomplish the job. And then as, as time goes by and technology changes, I hope that we stay current with what our lighting should be, especially, you know, Ogden Avenue and 63rd Street, and that stuff is different, but in residential neighborhoods, we really want to respect the neighborhood, and then also, I understand exactly why a school would want a sign, so.
So there is a representative here from the school district, Mr. Smith, with facilities maintenance, if you want to have him come up?
Yeah, I would just like to hear from, are they happy with the outcome? Because, you know, we love our schools and we want you to have what you need as well.
Yeah, so the sign technology on it is like fully programmable, so we can adjust the brightness as low as possible. We can program it to go off at 9:00, 10:00, you know. We are, I mean, we were just looking to get the message out on the sign board, that was the biggest thing. The sign code allows that, you know, it's, I think, it's good to restrict the motion, you know, the five seconds, I think that's important, you know, and then we're not going to play video on it, it's strictly going to be scroll text, you know, basic things, just like the city sign, you know, very similar to that, so. Yeah, it was very, very good working with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
You need it, I don't know how old that one is, but I always see the maintenance gentlemen changing it every morning and struggling, letters are falling off, so this will be a nice upgrade, I think. Maybe it'll slow the drivers down, too. Any other comments from anyone? Seeing none, I'd ask for roll call. Seeing none, I'd ask for roll call, please.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move on to new, new business B, an increase in available Class II liquor license. Board to consider ordinance increasing the number of available Class II liquor license by one for TQLA Westmont LLC, TQLA Kitchen and Cantina at 19 West Ogden Avenue in Westmont. Deputy Liquor Commissioner Mulholland.
Deputy Mayor and Village Board, sorry, TQLA, and I just confirmed, we can't pronounce it tequila, Westmont, doing business as Tequila Kitchen and Cantina, submitted an application for a Class II liquor license at 19 West Ogden Avenue. That's the site of the former wood grain pizza location. A background review of the three owners indicates they are eligible to receive a liquor license. Board is asked to increase the number of Class II available liquor license by one to allow the liquor commissioner the ability to issue a license to Tequila Westmont LLC if he so chooses to do so. I did a background review on the three owners who are here with me today, this morning. We have Osman Rahah, we have George Cruz, okay, and Augustine Cruz, and did a background check, everything is fine. They plan on opening an upscale Mexican restaurant for food and tequila, but rather than me boring you with my, my summary, I'll let them talk and explain their, what they plan on doing. So I've, I've asked for spokesmen, so whoever's going to go.
Trustees, Mr. Mayor, thank you for having us here today.
Come over, go to the microphone. There you go.
Thank you for having us here today. My name's George Cruz. My business partner, Augustine Cruz, he's my brother. My other business partner, Ozmar Rajah. He'd be having the honors to explain to you what we have in plan for the city of Westmont.
Yeah, thank you for having us. Basically, we want to bring in high-end food, high-end quality food, chef-driven menu. We're bringing our chef from Chicago, so he's, he's well diverse in the menu. We want to provide basically comforting food. We're modernizing kitchen, we're building a hood system, we're really trying to make the space equitable for everything. We're building garage doors. It's a really nice, it's a nice area, a nice location, so we really want to show out with our food, you know, the drinks, we craft cocktails, everything's handmade, made from scratch. And we're going to utilize those two wood grain ovens that they left there, we're going to utilize for fresh tortillas, fresh food. That's our main concept, is going to be food, pushing a lot of food.
And there is one item, too, and doing a background, that they are interested in video gaming sometime in the future. I've explained to them the 365-day waiting period before that can come into place and they understand that, but they just indicate, and I won't let the board know, they are indicated, they are interested in gaming in the future. Not saying they'll get it, but they, as of right now, they're interested, so. Any questions?
And this is the wood grain location that closed up. Go ahead, trustee.
How many brands of tequila are you bringing in?
Multiple, so around like 15 to 20, we're going to try to carry. A lot of higher end stuff, 1942 Casa Azul, Reposado, Minejo. So we like to, you know, the higher end clientele is what we're really shooting for, that's what we like.
Thank you.
No problem.
You said something about garage doors, kind of like an open air kind of stuff?
Yeah, so we're going to, we're in the restaurant business, so we realize a lot of like restaurants, like people like patio space, people like open areas, you know, fresh breeze, like even tonight, like a beautiful night, so we're really focused on building a nice garage door to like let people in, they can see throughout, see the street and everything like that. So it's just fresh breeze and we realize it's like super important right now, sort of, even with, even without COVID, with COVID, people like patio season.
Can that be on the Ogden Avenue sign?
Yeah, it's an all glass one, too, so it's going to look really professional and modest.
You can have a little patio there.
Yeah, so there's already designated patio and this seating for maybe 10, 15 people, but it's just a nice look to have something like, you know, accessible like that.
It's an existing patio. Pot Billy has one, I'm not sure.
A little one they got, yeah.
If you don't, you gotta drive by to look for it and see it, but it's there. And their hours of operation are?
We're going to shoot for the lunch rush because Ogden is pretty, pretty well with the car dealerships and businesses, business oriented. We do have a sandwich shop in Opelika, so we know like the lunch is pretty primarily for businesses, a lot of catering, so we shoot from 11 to 12. And the weekends, you know, you get your dinners, you get your after-work crowds, so we shoot a little later for around 1:00 AM, just for dinner crowd, date, date night and stuff like that, so we're pretty excited.
Any other, I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Simonovic.
Motion made in second to approve. Questions? I mean, today I was talking to deputy liquor commissioner and we, we could only come up with three tequilas, so. But we didn't ask Siri, so. Any, any, seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
We look forward to, opening is going to be?
We shoot for September.
Okay.
Trying to get ready to go.
They're, they're working on getting their permits to committee development and wanting to get this.
And gentleman at the door, Larry Forrest-Burge, you're already good, good. He's the right guy to talk to, so good luck.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Glad to be part of Westmont. Thank you.
New business C, award a bid proposal, 2021 Lincoln Municipal Parking Lot Project. Board to consider ordinance accepting the bid proposal from Chicagoland Paving for the village's 2021 Lincoln Municipal Parking Lot Project and authorizing a contract consistent with the bid documents. Public Works Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. The village accepted bid proposals from nine contractors for the 2021 Lincoln Municipal Parking Lot Project, which is located basically at Lincoln and Irving. The little bidder was Chicagoland Paving with a low bid of $1,400,000, which is approximately 5% below the injuring estimate of $1,100,086. Staff has recommends accepting this proposal. We reviewed the plans and it should be a beautiful parking lot when it's all said and done.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second.
Little.
Motion made in second. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business D, travel expense approval. Board to consider a motion to waive fiscal year 2021, '22 expense reimbursement limit of $3,000 to authorize an overage not to exceed $1,000. And I'm going to turn this over to the Assistant Village Manager, Parker.
Sure, so as some of you may recall, back in 2016, the state passed statutes that required municipalities to make some specific policies with regards to travel and expense reimbursement. And one of those policy, one of the requirements is that in that policy, the board needs to set a limit that says if anybody exceeds this limit, then it generates additional approvals by the village board. And so back in 2016, the board set that limit at $3,000. We've occasionally, since that time, had a couple instances where one individual is expected to potentially be utilizing over $3,000 for travel. Last year, we didn't have any due to the pandemic. This year, we've got one right now, so it's expected that Chief Gunther's travel and expenditures, including lodging and travel, is going to exceed that $3,000 limit, so this is just the request for approval for that.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Barker.
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second to approve on the question. Chief, where are you going?
It's actually multiple, you know, it's not just even one event, so they, it's all budgeted amounts and it's, you know, approved training and conferences.
I caught him by surprise, yeah.
Yeah, so I should have specified that, so it's not a single event, it's for the full fiscal year, so there's two different events. And I will say, you know, especially in this climate, you know, this day and age, the idea of being able to share and learn best practices from national associations and organizations is probably more important than ever, especially for a police department. So I think it's wise that we're, you know, participating in those kind of things to make sure we've got the best policies and practices that we have.
It's not a lot for two events, for two. Yeah, so, any other comments? I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business E, amend section 54-32 of the Code of Ordinances. Board to consider ordinance amending section 54-32 of the Westmont Code of Ordinances to increase the number of sergeants by one to total of nine. Chief Gunther.
Thank you. Of course, I'm the next item after the last item. The order was probably on purpose. Thank you. As we covered at the Public Safety Committee meeting last Wednesday, my request is to increase the number of sergeants that are allowed on the police department by one to add another relief patrol sergeant for that division. Currently, we have more or less seven vacancies where we don't have operational personnel that are deployable and usable on the street. Well, six are on the street and one is, we currently have a detective vacancy as well with the retirement of Detective Schneider a couple of weeks ago. So in, in theory, with the complexity of law and with the recently passed police reform bill, the, the absolute demand for transparency and supervision on the street, we want to put another sergeant with, with experience in that role. The way that the promotion works is the Fire and Police Commission has the ultimate authority of promoting off of the sergeant eligibility list. Currently, the, off of the top three on the list, all three that are currently on the list have in excess of 15 years each of experience, one up to as high as 21 years of experience. So it's a seasoned group that the Fire and Police Commission would be choosing from. Two out of the, one is currently a detective, one's in patrol, and the other one is our DEA task force member. So they're, they also have diverse backgrounds, so it's a win no matter who they select, select out of that group. The, you know, the benefits to the, to the department and to the village for having a little bit more flexibility with supervision, you know, certainly with scheduling from my perspective for getting the right people in the right spots. The sergeant role is kind of a two-phase thing, you know, there, there's a lot of administrative work in the building and then obviously you want them on the hot calls, the armed robberies, the domestics, the, you know, the more high liability type events. And it's, you know, to a point where we can't be two places at once with the, with the volume of work that we have to do inside as well as be on the street with the, with the officers outside. I will have to say that despite the fact that we have a lot of youth on the department, they are all, you know, everybody that we have are highly professional and highly trained, you know, it's really just a function of looking for that institutional knowledge more than anything to get an extra set of eyes and ears in the street to make sure that we're doing everything correctly. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'm going to accept.
Second.
Motion made second. Any comments or questions? Did a good job explaining. I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. New business F, zoning map amendment at 2-44 Plaza Drive. Board to consider ordinance approving a zoning ordinance map amendment to rezone one half of split zone property located at 2-44 Plaza Drive, Westmont, from the office research district to the manufacturing district. Director Sylvester.
Mr. Mayor and trustees, this is a very straightforward proposal to change half, to change the zoning on half of a lot. This is a pretty big piece of property in the northeast corner of North Cass Avenue and Plaza Drive. It's got a light industrial building with a lot of loading bays on it due to a quirk in, in zoning and I believe a lot consolidation that happened about 15 years ago. Half of the property has office zoning along Cass and half of the building has manufacturing zoning closer to Ty Warner Park. All of the properties around Ty Warner Park have manufacturing zoning. So the zoning designation literally splits the building in two, and this is just to clean that up. Because of the nature of the building and the nature of the uses in there, the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission is to make the entire property, or designate the entire property with M or manufacturing zoning.
Yes, trustee.
Will that result in any additional traffic at those loading bays right there? Because I, I know I get stopped all the time when I'm trying to turn onto Plaza.
Honestly, I don't think the, the cleanup of the zoning map will have any practical impact on the actual uses and businesses that go in there. It just cleans up a zoning map anomaly.
So it's not being done to accommodate any particular?
Correct.
Okay.
This was more staff-driven.
This came up, as you'll recall, I think it was back in March, every year, you're asked to formally approve the zoning map that reflects all of the changes in zoning from the previous calendar year. We have a GIS person who goes through the map regularly and finds discrepancies, anomalies, things like that, and she brought to our attention the situation where a single lot had two zoning designations. There's actually a small handful of similar situations around the village and as time allows and staffing allows, we'll try to clean those up, too.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second. Simonovic.
Motion made in second to approve. Simonovic. Any more comments? Trustee Barker?
So following that issue in Morris, Illinois, when we have manufacturing, do we have any idea what is in that light manufacturing, what takes place in those buildings?
It's a good question. I'll start answering, but Fire Chief Riley might be able to elaborate. There's really two stages where we at the village know what's going into a building and what the activities are within that building. One is when it's new, they're required to get a business license and we review the proposed use and if it's allowed and if there's any special safety precautions that are required, and we handle it at that time. Secondly, and this is where Fire Chief Riley can provide more information, I believe once a year, Fire Prevention Bureau staff go through all commercial buildings in the village and, and examine and inspect all kinds of stuff, and if there were any problems, I think those inspections would reveal any problem.
So it falls under the heading of, say, light manufacturing, but then you have fire inspection on an annual basis that keeps us safe.
Right, before even we give the business, the final business license or occupancy, you know, we make sure that storage racking is suffice, making sure that sprinkler systems are installed for what the manufacturing is going to be, and a lot of times these do change. But unfortunately, I hate to say that after we leave that building and we don't get back in there for 12 to 14 months, we truly have no idea what some of these businesses are doing. And it happened this winter where, you know, we had heavy snow up on Plaza and the 55-gallon drum that was sitting outside got hit by a snowplow and that leaks into the storm sewer and then we're with Mike and Public Works and dealing with the property management up there. So as often as we try to get into these businesses, there's always things that happen after this. I'm sure you mostly know, but the fire department was summoned to Morris the other day. We went down there with myself, heavy squad and the, and an ambulance to support the efforts down there. But as you've seen probably on the news, you know, the Morris mayor and the fire chief were well unaware of what was in that building. It used to be an old paper mill that has burned numerous times in the past, but I think with great staff work here and leadership of everybody involved, we know what's coming into our town. We have great codes, some of them are, we know are a little strict, but this is what avoids these big incidents that happened in Rockton and what happened here.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Anybody have any miscellaneous items to bring up? Seeing none, I do have to ask for an executive session for, to discuss the following, the review of executive session minutes pursuant to section 2C 21 of the Open Meetings Act. And this is a requirement, every six months, you're supposed to review whatever executive session minutes that are still not released. And there won't be a lot, but, and Clerk Simmsky promised you to enjoy the executive session meeting, so I need a motion to adjourn to that executive session.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made second to adjourn the executive session. I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
We will be adjourning to executive session. There will not be any further business following that executive session. So, thank you. It's going to be in there with all the cake.